Caption, the caption.
Oh, yeah.
How bad is it? Pretty good.
Yeah, nice picture, but they still didn't get them all. There's that one fan there. They just replaced them. One of them's already not working and it's falling off the ceiling.
Yeah.
They didn't capture that at all.
So, what is that probably?
Beautiful. It's like, it's beautiful.
Funny, it's already, and, uh, we're just.
Cool.
Uh, recreation.
So, that's four fifteen.
Is it four fifteen?
Maybe, I'm not, they want, they need to be, I would be shocked.
Despite caution, the weather is so hot, we couldn't stay here. We had a meeting this afternoon, and this is a good year.
Four fifteen.
No, I know it's the worst one.
If the neighbors going in after, after about five minutes.
Thank you.
I'm staying.
I thought it'd cheer up.
No, it's not.
Going in.
Please don't wash up your sis.
And everybody did their, their, their budget.
Rachel, card service, this should have called me any minute. Or, under indictment, please call immediately. Feel more than sufficient for my arrest.
I'm gonna tell you, how crazy do we wanna act?
I don't know. You're really, I, uh, I'm the first one.
I know.
Your red one.
My red one is only for the pool. And the rest of the time, it's this one. Yeah, some people today were telling me it's almost time to put that red hat to rest. And I won't even wear it thirty something years, why do I wanna put it away now?
Tell them to clean up your hat when they clean up.
That might've given them the incentive, but then they're gonna have to sue me, 'cause I still ain't taking that off. I know, that is my pool hat. Starting to get a little thin on the top, and that keeps me from getting sunburned.
Oh, okay. You do need a lash.
Yeah. How thin? Not a whole lot thin, but, but you can still see, you can still see pink up there. That's skin.
He has some all over there.
I had that most certain prices in California.
Really?
They, they're sure going in. Yeah.
These little things, Tony, how you use things, yeah.
Oh, he does, yeah.
All right, it's three o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting orders. I'll do roll call first, 'cause we're starting the meeting tonight with the workshop on storm water maintenance. With us today is our acting district attorney, is Wendy Mink. Supervisor Tinkle is here, supervisor Banks, supervisor Feinberg, supervisor Guy, supervisor Flaherty, and our district manager, Chris. And if anyone has one of these devices with you, please turn it to silent so the headphones ringing or anything. And if you wish to address the board, you can fill out all the forms in the back and get it to this gentleman here with the pile on. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Chris, for the stream order. The neighborhood's working.
First day of plugging the allegiance.
Plugs of allegiance.
Well, the pledge of the allegiance was at the start of the regular meeting, but if everybody wants to do it now, I'm happy to do it now, we can do it again.
In which way?
All right, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with the love with the reading of the law.
Thank you, members of the board, I have. You hear that okay? We had just scheduled for the beginning of the meeting a board workshop on stormwater maintenance, and the difference with the workshop, it's really just an open discussion. If there's other topics that you'd like to bring up or address, that's fine. And with the workshop, there is no board vote, no official action taken, it's really just a free flow of information, exchange of ideas. And what we have today is, wanted just to touch on stormwater maintenance options, and also wanted to just talk about ADA site compliance with our website briefly. But I handed out some materials and their copies in the back on some proposals for stormwater maintenance, and this has been a big issue in the district. And in the budget for this year, we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, to address cleaning a stormwater system. And we had a couple different ways to approach this. First was just continue to do it neighborhood by neighborhood, the way we started at Gateway Greens. And the second option we had was to go into those neighborhoods that have identified high levels of blockage in the pipes. And by high levels, I mean in some cases fifty percent or more of those systems. And what we have presented is a number of subdivisions and our cost estimates to clean those pipes in those areas. Now, the benefit is, you attack the biggest problems first, and you get a presence in a lot of subdivisions. The downside is, you'll have an additional localization cost for the contractor when he fixes equipment up and has to move into another area. And you see some of the costs in the sheets behind it, the cleaning estimates for those high-impacted areas is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The second, second component, and this is following up from the presentation made to the board, was maintenance and cleaning of conveyances in the district and the stormwater system, such as the Stony Brook Canal and some of those conveyances that go lake to lake, not the actual stormwater ponds themselves. And we had an estimate to address those areas, and again, highly impacted areas, areas that have started to silt in, you know, pipes that are filling up, at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. So, that would bring us to three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars estimate, a little higher than our budget. But our plan would be to have some discussion on that today, go out to bid in October, get the bids in November, and then bring those solid figures back with the bids to the board the first part of December, and that way you're giving the contractor a notice to proceed January first when the dry season starts. A big part of that, cleaning those storm drains can be if they're full of water, they have to plug them, pump them out, and clean them, and it adds a lot to the cost. Obviously, a lot cheaper to do it in the dry season, like the Lake Bank maintenance program. For some of those larger pipes, when you get to forty-eight to sixty inches, they always have water in them, and you do have to plug them and pipe them. So, it's, it's an expensive process, and I think you could see that by the handout. And with that, I'd open up any questions or discussions from the board members.
Chris, on, on your page one, you've got, these are your prioritization.
Yes.
Areas, and then the subsequent documents, is this a breakdown of each? Does this correspond to the page one?
Yes.
Okay. So, the.
Not in the same order, too.
The, the page, page one of the options for the storm cleaning are specific to storm drain cleaning, and then there's the, the bid sheet that's put together behind the twenty-eighteen flowway inspected.
So, okay, so there's a little bit of discrepancy in the, in the, in the calls. So, you know, Devonshire Lakes on your breakdown sheet is five thousand seven hundred and sixty-five, on the bullet point is six thousand nine twenty.
Yeah, I'll have to check, I think, I think we've added a little bit of money, padded that a little bit for camera work.
Okay, inspection. And this will, for these communities, is this, how much, let's say Daniel's Reserve, for example. Thirty-eight or so, so it's not all-inclusive, it's just portions that have the most severity.
Sure, there was a, a district-wide evaluation done by Morris Riley, where they went in and inspected all the pipes.
Yeah.
And that's where we've taken this.
So, this is the sections that rated high in severity.
Correct.
And is it, I don't know, who can jump in, either you or, or district engineer. From a cost perspective, I mean, if we were, basically two options. We, we do a severity-based solution that addresses the most severe areas to provide the most impact in this first run. And the second option is to do a complete clean-out per community, or based on geographical areas that, as we determine them. Is one more cost-effective than the other? I mean, if you, you're looking at cost-benefit, do we get more benefit by cleaning the most severe areas and address the full clean-out in a phase two? Or should we really be looking at a full community or geographic rollout? I just, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, we, we looked at, like Gateway Greens, you know, the plan was just to go in and clean the whole community, and what you find out is there's some areas that are worse than others, and some areas, you know, you almost don't need to go in and clean. And that's what you document where those areas are, but these ones are from the survey. And we just thought, going to hit those real problematic areas versus cleaning an entire neighborhood, it only may have a portion of the pipes, you know, that's a problem. And then after we do this, the conveyances, then just move into neighborhood by neighborhood on a regular maintenance basis.
I mean, if we're, if, if we're looking at why are we doing this?
Yeah.
It's to eliminate or reduce the risk of backups, you know? So, it seems like to me, the, the best solution is to address the most severe areas first. Am I, is that accurate?
I agree.
What, what I did is I'd sent Chris an email, I looked at all the cut sheets and all the tapes, and I sent him an email that indicated basically all communities within Gateway excluding Waterford, Devonshire, Eagle Point, Commerce Lakes Drive, have segments meeting the requirement of fifty percent or greater. That worked out to be ninety-three manhole-to-manhole segments of fifteen-inch to seventy-two-inch pipe totaling over ten thousand five hundred feet. I used Metar's bid, plus a ten percent contingency, and my number was two-seventy-five. And if you add ten percent to yours, it's two-seventy-five.
Yeah, it's right there.
So, we're right on the same thing. I haven't compared line item versus line item. But my deal, rather than cutting the baby and somebody being left out, at least this aggressively, and it is a little more expensive, because as, as Chris said, you'll have the higher demob cost. But my thought is, we get into every community, ask anything over fifty percent line blockage, get rid of it, and if it does indeed come up with two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, that leaves about seventy-five thousand to do the other work that we had on that schedule. And on that deal that Hagan did, if you look at that map, I would say three and four. Three being the flowway from Gateway to Pelican Reserve, in my opinion, is critical. That, over the years, has grown up very thick, and we take that water out. The other one is the Stony Brook, all the way from the outfall at eighty-three, all the way over to pond one-thirty.
Yeah.
That is critical. And I would say that if we would take and do the two-seventy-five or two-fifty, whatever the number is, that Chris has identified in conjunction with those two cleanings, plus the twin eighty-fours that have that rock that we gotta get out of. And take area one and put it into a phase two. Our problem with area one, I was up in Indiana, did some work at my engineering office, and we get serious problems with those interstate crossings. They're way undersized. If we get a, just a huge storm, the water backs up our calculations, and they were crude, but it backs up two feet. And that two feet will flood the lower half of Pelican Reserve. So, doing anything on the other side of I-75 at this point in time, with our problem being the blockage of the two culverts going into I-75, I think we can defer that. I don't think we'll ever get that huge flow over to the other side where it's a real problem. It does need to be cleaned, and I think it can be a phase two project.
That's not what Hagan told us.
I'm sorry.
My recollection is that we were told that the most critical part was on the west side of I-75, where there are rocks and trees and all kinds of debris, that, that needs to be cleaned first.
There is stuff there, but Hagan didn't do hydraulic calculation to find out what the restriction was in the pipe itself to get water open there. Granted, if we could get the water under the interstate, then that would be a problem. But we're short on money, and I don't think you have enough to do it all. So, that's why I say I'd do three and four and clean the twin eighty-fours, and then do the, whatever you had, ninety, hundred manhole-to-manhole segments of sewers with fifty percent blockage.
Correct. And I will add that we've, we've been out there, and I work with the DBI that has the contract to maintain the interstate, because a couple of those ends, which was in the DOT right-of-way, were heavily overgrown. And they came up, cleaned those out recently.
Now, they've done all of it now? Because the last time I was over there, they'd done a partial, but they hadn't done it from the colonial side, because of that wall they put in that's.
Well, they, they're only in there right-of-way, but they're giving me a quote right now. I'm going and finishing also on the west side of the interstate to pull that sandbar out and that rock where that restriction is. And the advantage with them is they can work from the interstate, because they are the contractor, so they can bring a long stick and piece of equipment, work it from the interstate, go out versus having to try to enter into colonial.
You talked about the, the term.
Yes. Who would, please? Um, DBI, which is the parent company of Aquagymics, has the contract to maintain the interstate. And I got in touch with them, because on that interstate right-of-way, that crossing, it was heavily overgrown, and they came in and sprayed it and brought it in and cleared it all out. Now, we only have that bit of obstruction from the right-of-way back to the headwall, and they're getting me a quote right now. And I think that we'll be able to squeeze that in some of the other stormwater management budget. And again, then you aren't running trucks in and out of colonial and disturbing that, they can work it right from the side of the interstate.
We'll get there.
Well, you might find that the bids would come in lower than what Metar's bid, because keep in mind, they were basically so-so's bidder the last time on some of this stuff.
Yeah.
So, we might get a lower bid and go below two-fifty to be able to do more work.
This, uh, this estimate that you have as a backup to the bullet point, are these fifty percent and greater, or is that, is that the cutoff here?
Yes.
On the sheet, okay, I just wanted to.
And those, those prices are basically taken from our most recent contract that we have. Now, we'll caution you in this discussion, too, it's one thing when you go in and clean those pipes in camera, you might find some things that are bad. We have seen a few where groundwater is just coming, coming in, so that may be a time where we'll be noting that, too, and looking at rounding costs, going and fixing the pipe on top of the cleaning.
Because when they videoed these with the underwater camera, a lot of that stuff wasn't seen.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes.
I do have a question. You have a total here of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty dollars plus the contingency fund. However, I know that Mr. Banks said there's a difference, so I added that, and this total actually should be, according to the front page, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and two-hundred-and-nineteen, two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Would that change the contingency fund and then the grand total?
Well, it'd change it, but that's all really for discussion, because until we put those items out to bid and get hard prices from a contractor, those are just best, best guesses.
And, and this front sheet really isn't, it's different from the sheet.
Yes. That's why.
The key is to determine this, this segment's over fifty percent blockage. That's.
Exactly, yes.
So, Chris, is, uh, I'm sorry, Catherine.
That's what I, go right ahead.
So, if you, I don't wanna drive you.
No, go ahead, I started Mr. Guy.
Chris, with, um, so the phase one would be the most severe, and then phase two would, would be basically everything else, what would be your plan for that? Is that maybe over a three-year period?
We would go to start the neighborhood by neighborhood, and depending on the allocation or how we decide to finance it and budget, you know, we're also looking at the assessment methodology of adding a small fee each month to the utility bill and creating a stormwater utility. And that way you have a transparent line of money, people are paying for it, they're, what's the score? Clean stormwater pipes.
Yeah, because I would like to, I mean, I think this phase one makes absolute sense to move forward that, but I think the bigger picture, too, is to get everything cleaned, so we can at least start at zero and then have a maintenance schedule on top of that. It, it would be nice to have an idea of kind of what that plan looks like, so we can talk funding resources for it.
And, and it's probably something we, we would put in the next year's, uh, next year's budget and priority list. And so, we have gone through, community by community, and counted each one of those structures, and, uh, tell us, working on this for weeks, and creating solid spreadsheets for bidding those numbers, so we can extrapolate that, come up with some hard budget numbers, and move into those other phases, so that, that phase work's already been done.
Well, at this time, there's no harm in bidding everything that you've got here.
I know.
We just did it all. Uh, and if it comes back and it's over, we just change order out, those items to bring it within budget. It might, we might get lucky and find out it's, all can be done for three-fifty.
Mr. Guy, I think you have comments, questions?
I have a question. Uh, Christopher, I might count, uh, ten neighborhoods on this, on this report.
Yes, sir.
Do you intend to put together a bid sheet for a company to bid on all ten at once, or pick and choose the ones that they want to bid on? Or how, how would you likely proceed, knowing that we're not gonna start work until January, you said, I think? And we wanna get this, we wanna get this thing underway, but we wanna get it finished.
We, we would bid it out in two pieces, one the conveyances, and one the pipe cleaning, because the contractor would be a little different for the conveyance work. But the amount of work that we have here, we think that a contractor could do reasonably in that one dry season. So, and the, the conveyances, say the Stony Brook Canal and that type of work, where they, where they would need heavy equipment, long sticks, you know, doing some panel line, that type of thing, would be one part of the bid, and then another bid for it to stay clean.
But, maybe I didn't ask it right. Is, is the same contractor, successful contractor, bidder, better do both Devonshire Lakes and hidden lakes, for instance?
Yes, I would think so.
That'd be the way you'd bid it.
Yeah, we wouldn't bid it neighborhood by neighborhood, because it probably wouldn't be enough work to save on an economy scale. If you bring the contractor and say, now you're gonna give these ten neighborhoods over these four months, I think we'd have a price there.
Okay. I understand your words, I'm, I'm kinda surprised, to tell you the truth.
Well, we can, that's what we're here to talk about, because there's different ways we can approach it. You know, some folks even talked about, you know, bidding the lakes, bidding a couple of them out, and then waiting two or three weeks and bidding the other ones. Because some contractors, they might not wanna bid on a lot, but then they're scared to bid on two or three, because they might get them all. But if you, so if you broke them out, they didn't get those two, then they might come back and say, okay, I can, you know, it's a lot more trouble from administrative standpoint staggering those bids, but it, it may, you know, work out on the bottom line.
And we should think, we should think seriously about that.
We'll be coming back with a proposal for that, the documents, so.
But the key is to be on the street by December or January. Because those water levels, the minute those levels are down, those guys gotta be on, uh, in the field.
We would hope to put, have that bid put together, have it out toward the end of October, then it's on into November, and the first date in December, come to the board with those numbers. That way, I can, I can give them a notice to proceed by Jan. one.
I agree.
Mrs. Flaherty, I'll go ahead.
Okay. So, you're figuring this is gonna cost with the flowway and the cleaning, over the three-hundred-and-fifty we have budgeted?
Correct.
So, what, now that's the thing, if it does cost over that, we could go into the capital reserves to create a difference?
Could, and we also have some other stormwater maintenance budgets, so we could pull a little bit from two or three on the maintenance and, and get some more money.
Okay.
So, it's three-eighty, Nancy?
Is it three-eighty?
Yeah, that's the two, two-fifty-two, six-forty-two for the stormwater, and one-twenty-seven, four-hundred for the flowway. That's a total of three-eighty, forty-two.
Or ten percent off.
Yeah. And, and give or take, this, you know, we have a bidding, so there's some variance possible there.
And then two-fifty-two includes a contingency.
Yes.
So, even if it's four-hundred thousand, that's only fifty that's out of the reserve, and that's not a lot to get this completed.
Yep.
And, and, oh, excuse me.
That's okay.
And by that time, we ought to know how much of the fiscal year eighteen budget has been expensed and is gonna roll forward.
Right.
And use it for a press.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to Mr. Get Hard. Did you have any comments?
No.
That was, that was your comment?
Yeah.
Mr. Get Hard, you wanted to make a comment?
Well, just based on our experience, because we've bid through this already in our community, I don't know if you have considered, because I totally support the need for this, but we zoned off our community in the five zones. We're doing so many zones a year, depending what the budget allows. And if you can get to all these, and you consider you've done nothing in, up, years, if you let out a three-year plan to achieve this, and a budget of a hundred thousand dollars, you could accomplish it without any dipping into reserve funds or anything else, just doing it in an orderly fashion. The likelihood of another thousand-year storm this year, next year, in the area is pretty, pretty slim. And it would be a better way to, you know, financially manage, so.
The problem with that, Bob, is that we've identified that the total cost of cleaning everything twenty percent and greater is about two billion.
I totally agree, but if you start with a fifty percent for three years, our, our experience is, when we first did, and then we rechecked five years later, what much changed? They stayed clean. That was our experience. And all I would submit is, if you take care of your fifty percent of this plan, then the next three years, you go for the thirty percent excepted. Of course, you randomly gotta go back and re-inspect, but that's cheap, that's a pain.
Yeah, and we, and we budgeted the three-fifty already.
So, if you got it there, I would submit that I would just phase it in, just.
Thank you, Bob. Do you need any comments?
So, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, we have to kind of put this on the agenda for next time around, so we can go down it, so we can go to the, if that's the.
I'll, I'll bring back the, the actual proposal, how we wanna do it, and a couple of options.
Okay.
And, uh, as I said, late October, we'll, we'll put it out on the street.
Thank you.
Deep weather, and, uh.
Well, before we end the workshop, Mr. Pratt wanted to bring up the ADA site compliance proposal.
Okay, um, real quick with all the. Sorry, my. So, you know, we've met, we've talked to you guys about it a couple times, we've met with a handful of people, phone calls, gone through little trainings, webinar things. Different companies that do all this ADA site compliance, and the proposal you have in front of you is from a guy named Scott, he's, owns that company, ADA Site Compliance. He works with most of the CDDs and special districts here in Florida. He represents, I think he works with one of the large insurance companies down here, so he represents almost all their clients. And there's many options we can take. We can either have our staff, which we don't really have the staff to do it, but it can be done in-house, which would require training, the employee, the time, effort, all of that, to go through and make the whole site compliance and keep it up to date. Then there's the option to hire companies that'll come in and just do it all for you, which is very expensive. That ADA site compliance, they do that, and then they also just came up with this new way that they've found has been working very well for the CDDs, and that's what that proposal is. And basically, they've found that most CDDs just want to have the, their minimum website, everything that they legally have to have on a website, and they don't have the money to spend on a more advanced website, and they are just going with a slimmed-down version of it. So, essentially, is what they do, is they offer a template, and they would take our website and convert everything and put it in this template, which would be like twelve to fifteen pages, which right now our website has, kind of close to like a hundred. So, it'd be very slimmed down, and that's just shy of five thousand dollars. They do all of that work, and then essentially, all that the staff would have to do is maintain it, and the big thing is the PDF pages. And all the PDF pages have to be compliant, they have to be accessible. As you can see in there, they charge almost three dollars a page to do that, and we have board books that are a hundred and fifty pages, twice a month, and all of our budget and all of the other documents, it's very expensive. So, they offer that training in there, for like thirty-five hundred, transmit staff members to do it, and then additional training is to be determined. There'd be another proposal for the training, could be another like two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars. So, basically, their proposal is ten thousand dollars, they'll do all the work, bring everything over to the new site, launch the new site. You, you can kind of pick like colors, schemes like that, that's about it. It'd be a very basic. It'd be a very basic website, and then staff here would have to, every time we upload PDFs, things like that, we would have to make them, so they're accessible and they go on there. The other option is, he said, if you guys just love your website, and love all the pages, and don't want to get rid of it, that's fine. They can go on there and audit and remediate it. He wouldn't give me a proposal on that, because he said they would really have to go through like weird things, like the lightning detector. There's a little like widget on the website that you can go and do that, and he's like, you know, that would require a lot of coding and things like that. Basically, if we wanted them to keep our site as it is, they could do it. He said, more than likely, it would be close to fifty thousand dollars. And that is not the training, and the staff still has to do all the PDF stuff, and that's just a one-time thing. They wouldn't be maintain, I mean, we could have them maintain it, but that maintenance would be extremely expensive every year, whereas in that proposal, I think it's like eighteen hundred a year, for that dummy-down version. So, you know, we here have kind of decided that, you know, the best approach is that a professional who knows what they're doing do this. We don't have people here to do it, with the knowledge to do it. The five thousand dollars for all this going on seems reasonable. We would just be giving up the site that we have now.
That's public, get access to those records.
It, it'll still be on there. There, there'd be a page with our, all of our legal documents, everything that legally has to be on there, it'll all be on there. There would just be like a page that could go on, like right now, if you click, I think you clicked like a tab, there's a dropdown of like budget, financial statements, different reports. It would just all be a page of like documents, and then it'd be kind of sorted.
They'll still be on the cheaper version?
Yes.
And the minutes of the meetings on the cheaper version?
Yes.
Okay, then. What's not on the cheaper version? It sounds like to me, that's the main thing people want. What was driving the cost up? To go with the, to the, to the full meal deal?
Because we have, like I said, like a hundred pages. You go on our thing, and there's like a page for storage, there's a page for soccer, there's a page for everything. There's all kinds of stuff. All that would really go away, there'd be like twelve different pages. So you kind of have a home, you'd have your documents, you could have one for like Parks and Rec, you could have one for like stormwater information, things like that. You'd have kind of these twelve pages to select from. And to me, for, I tried going to see if we had the analytics on our website, to see how many people view it. We don't have it on, the plugin's not set up on there, so I couldn't actually see. But as a general understanding, I feel like that everything that the residents go to our site for, this basic version would easily provide all of that. I don't think people here use everything we have on the site. And a lot of those pages on there, some I noticed, they'll say like, come soon. There's so much on there, I think people forgot to even get to it.
Well, and it's, you know, unfortunately, we have to look at this kind of like an insurance policy, because it keeps us from being soon.
And they maintain it, they, they audit it manually. They, it's called human auditing, and then some other one. Like a lot of these other companies will look at, there's like this software that audits your website every five days, and gives you detailed data. But it's software, and it's good, but it's not as good as somebody going in there like they do have a disability, can't see, use a screen reader, they actually use human auditing, go through it, they do that four times a year. Any type of, that WCAG, it's who sets the standard, which is constantly changing, with that annual agreement, they keep the site up to date to standard. So it's not like if they come out to standard two point two, it's another thousand for them to do, and they update it, refresh it.
So the, uh, camera, the video of the meetings, that's in the basic version?
No, that's a whole different thing. This is just the website.
It's just the website.
And when it comes to that, he is not an attorney, and is, you know, do not hold me to this, but it's kind of, as long as you were making an effort, and it, and YouTube does close captions. It's not bad, sometimes like if people are talking loud enough, it picks it up pretty well. People are kind of mumbling or something, it guesses if it even picks it up. And I don't, he kind of, you know, it's not a hundred percent, but it's still better than nothing, if you want to put it that way. That's something we could look into more, but that captioning of the video would be extremely expensive. And I talked to Lee County, Lee County, their Board of Commissioners, they do, they have people there, it's all, you know, full-blown, they do live caption, everything. When other groups hold meetings there, they don't even do it.
The board book would be in the basic deal?
The board book?
Yes.
All that would still be on, because legally it has to, so, I mean, we have to.
You're going to have to, you have a couple of hours.
Right.
So Mike, with, with, because we went through a full redesign, two years ago, year and a half ago? So, the developer that did our redesign, is there not like alt tags in here now? Does it, does this platform not have ADA inherent capability?
I guess not. And Diana reached out, a sick boy about it, and, you know, basically, they said like they could do it. Obviously, they know what they're doing with websites, but they aren't as knowledgeable with this whole ADA stuff right now. But I'm sure it's going to start changing, I'm sure they pay eventually, because it's probably going to be a big thing. But they, it would be a whole scope of work that they would have to, you know, give us a proposal for. And I don't know how much knowledge they do have strictly in WCAG and all that.
So are you looking for us to act on this today?
You don't have to act on it, I basically kind of want to see where you guys wanted to go. I mean, to me, and, and most of us here, it kind of seemed like a no-brainer, let's get it legal, let's just do it as five thousand dollars. You know, it's under the ten thousand dollar limit, but I didn't want to start doing that, and then all of a sudden, the board says, well, what are you doing with our website that we just spent money on two years ago, and now we have lost all these pages and things like that? So I was kind of trying to get a feel on how you guys felt about that. If we just want to get legal, affordable, have what we have to have, or if we do want this large.
Can we hold this on until the next board meeting?
Yeah.
I'd like to look into a couple things and make a couple of comments.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mike, how comfortable are you with this, this firm? Have you, have you checked out any of their work? Have you checked out their financials or anything?
I'm pretty comfortable with them. The guy, we've, we've talked to well over ten people, and we're different companies doing this stuff. And this guy really knows, he's pretty knowledgeable, and we've done two or three webinars, and he's always the speaker that these organizations have put on the webinars. They have him come to talk to everybody, updating. He's very knowledgeable in it. And it's funny how he started, because he actually was quite successful entrepreneur, and his website and all his businesses years ago, before this was even like kind of a big thing, got sued. And so he kind of learned, went through the whole process, and now started this other company, and now deals with this. And he represents, I mean, I'm not going to say all the districts, but it sounds like almost all the districts are going through this right now in Flores. And he even said, you know, if we do want to move forward with this, we would have to schedule this with them, and this, this is busy right now, obviously, with all these districts running to him. So it could be something that could be done in a couple of months, but we would have to, you know, schedule our time with them, our slot, and he's, it takes a couple of weeks for them to do it.
I keep thinking about our turnkey water meter project. I don't take anybody.
Right.
Off this other word. You don't trust, but verify, you ever hear that?
Yeah, yeah. And I asked him for a couple of websites that they've done, and they haven't gotten any launched yet. But he sent me a handful of screenshots of the ones that he's currently working on that are not actually live. And it's just a very basic WordPress thing, it's got their ADA site compliance, and it just has all the tabs and the documents. It looks very straightforward. I mean, it's just, it's a WordPress template. So the other thing is too, for some reason, if something went way downhill with them or something, you had to reach out to another developer or something, it's WordPress, it's, everybody can, can work with it.
And can he give us a more detailed proposal than just this one side? I think that would be beneficial for the board to see, a more detailed.
I mean, honestly, once, once we start moving in that direction, what, what I would look for him to do is give us some wireframes or a prototype of a migration strategy from our existing to what the new would be. And it would point out where the ADA improvements are. And he would probably go in and analyze our existing site, which is probably already done. At least some high level, they go through and say, you don't have, you know, alt tags, or you don't have whatever. But we should, we should see something, either a presentation, to come in and say, this is what the site will look like. Here's, you're going to go from this type of dropdown to this, you can tap through it, it'll have all this capability. And that, I think that's something we would be more comfortable with, actually seeing what that migration's going to look like, as opposed to just saying, okay, go and create us something. Because we might lose functionality.
Let somebody else be the first one, we'll be the second. We want to be the beginning.
No, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be the beginning.
I've done some ADA testing before, so I know some basic.
Yeah, and like the testing that they do is extremely basic. Before they talk to you, they go and grab like three pages and just say, yeah, you don't have any of this. And pretty much our website, with everybody we've talked to, has checked out and say, we have none of, we have none.
Yeah, and I'm a little surprised at that, but it's.
Think the color and all that, so.
Thank you, Mike.
And, you know, I'll caution another thing, is these lawsuits are being filed against fire districts and CDDs. They're starting to do the same with homeowners associations.
I knew that was going to happen next.
Yeah, with the websites that they have, and, you know, so don't be surprised if you're running a website in your HOA that someone comes knocking on your door, and you're faced with the same thing. And it will also, one way or the other, if we turn it down, it's going to cause an increase, I'm sure, in information requests to us, because we will have all those volumes of documents online, especially the historical ones that way through now, because at a couple of dollars a page, already there could be trained somebody to.
Well, it's going to force us, and we've talked about it for a couple of years, by having document requests process, and, and better means for us to store documents and retrieve it, as opposed to having everything on the, on the web. So we're, we're going to have to look at that even from a staff perspective. How can we have an infrastructure to store all these documents, a process where we can request it, and it be turned around in a, you know, in a very reasonable amount of time, and what kind of fees are going to be associated to it? So this, there's a lot of things that's going to happen that'll impact us, as opposed to just paying for updates.
That's great.
That's all our workshop.
All right.
Hey, um.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm done, sorry.
I have a question to answer about the agenda. Okay. Before we go into the meeting. We were supposed to have the reconsideration.
Mr. Pierce could not be here today, and Mr. Meezy could not either, so it was requested that it was, he would not be on this agenda.
Thank you, that's what I have to say.
No problem. All right, they'll take us into our regular meeting, and we've already discussed phones, and, uh, such as the elite. So, uh, audience comments, do you have cards?
Sure, we have seven cards, starting with, uh, Drew Brown. I want like certain, but we're talking about PTOAs, some POAs.
And then hit the timer here, since we got seven speakers, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson, members of the board and staff. I'm Jim Moran, residing in one zero one five four Hampton Park in Gateway. In full disclosure to the audience and to the board, I'm the supervisor and board supervisor, I'm a candidate for seat four of the board. There is a meet the candidates event in Daniel's address, September twenty-fourth. Questions that they've asked all the member, all the candidates to respond to, just can't wait. It's been in the, I say in this document that I provide you since twenty seventeen, I, I learned before the meeting started, that it's really been going on for four or five years. The issue is defund HOA POAs in the streets that they, in November twenty-eight, twenty seventeen memorandum by Attorney Pierce. He addressed the issue for all three of these HOA POAs, Town Lakes, Commercial Center, Fairway Lakes, Office Park, and Worthington Commerce Park. Daniel's preserve is concerned about Commerce Lakes Drive owned by Worthington. Attorney Pierce recommended in his memorandum that five steps be taken concerning Worthington Commerce Park. I know that some calls have been made as recommended in step five. Have steps one through four been completed? I urge someone on the board to make a motion to complete steps one to four, and if once completed, act as recommended in Attorney Pierce's step five. The same should be done for Town Lakes and Fairway Lakes. This can shouldn't be kicked down the road any further. Act that today, please, thank you very much.
Did you? Next.
We're going to discuss this later, because I've got some time after what he just said, or he wants to wait till later.
Yeah, let's let the other speakers.
Colonel Shaper, I'd like to speak about here at Gason.
Yes, I am back. And I'm still trying to save six million dollars, although nobody bought last night. We got copies there. Last time I was here, we were discussing the Hawthorne wells and other items. I'm still going after those Hawthorne wells, I'm not satisfied with the answers that I've received. And one of the things we discussed was, are we actually using reclaimed water, or are we not using reclaimed water? And the issue around there is, can we water more than four times a week? What I got from our last meeting was, there's no, we can't, and we're under Lee County restrictions. And that's not true from what I'm reading here, so we'll let you have it here. The first item here I want to go over is the Lee County ordinance number seventeen dash zero three. And I'd like to go to page number three. And L there says, reclaimed water shall mean wastewater that meets at a minimum secondary treatment and high-level disinfection, which is what we're doing back here. The next page on four says, this definition includes reclaimed water that has been augmented with supplemental water supply, such as ground or surface water. We're also doing that, we're drawing water out of the ground to supplement it. U is supplemental water supply, shall mean a non-podable groundwater, stormwater, or surface water utilized to supplement the supply of reclaimed water by either LCU or a customer, which is us. So, as far as I can tell on here, we are using reclaimed water. I have not read anything yet where it says, we're limited to just twenty-five percent. If it's less than twenty-five or less, it's not considered reclaimed water. And if you look at the next one here, where it says, long watering limits. This is from South Florida Water Management District. And on page three, there's a second page, they say reclaimed water used for irrigation is subject to voluntary watering limits, unless otherwise restricted by local government or utility. So their idea of this reclaimed water is, is voluntary. You can use as much as you want, whenever you want. Next thing I'd like to bring to attention is year-round irrigation restrictions from Lee County. See how highlighted there, it says watering restriction exceptions. On the next page says, watering may be conducted at any time if irrigating using reclaimed water. Now, the way I'm reading this, we are not restricted to this four days a week, like everybody thinks. We can water seven days a week if we want to. Which is why I'm saying is, I don't think we need those new wells. That we can take our current system that's not broke, just redesign it a little bit, give the tune-up. Take your water that you're using, and I meant from you, guys, that you're using for your common areas, switch it to different days that we're not using. That will take away a lot of the pressure problems that we're having. Instead of running, I know we discussed six million gallons a day, it'll take it down to maybe three and three. Three for the residents, three for you guys. Switch it around, it'll reduce the pressure on the pumps, you won't have that large demand of water being drawn out of the ground. I don't think we need new pumps, I just think we need a tune-up on them, to change things around. Another thing I'd like to address, under the Lee County ordinance.
Mr. Shaper, you have thirty seconds.
Okay. It's signage and identification. Okay. It's signs and identification. That's on page ten. If we're using reclaimed water, we're required to have signs out there letting the public know we're using reclaimed water. And I did put a copy on the very back. That's the sign you're supposed to have out here. And also one more item, I did take notice under prohibited uses there on page ten. E, I know hose bins are a lot above ground. I know, I did see one up there at Stony Brook where they were redoing that centerpiece there. I did see a hose bin sticking up out of the ground there some time ago. Whether it's still there or not, I don't know, but that is still hidden. You might want to check into that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Schofield, Sidewalk Prado.
Joe Schofield, Carina Pelican Preserve. First of all, I want to thank Chris and Mary Miller for responding to an emergency we had in the Prado section of our community where Lenar is putting sidewalks in that had supposed to have been just a very simple installation, has turned into a nightmare for the residents. We had a pre-construction meeting, did not get a whole lot of data or confirming information. I had mentioned this at the last meeting. Ed, you had asked me about the inspectors coming out. My comment was if they're not aware of it, they don't show up. After several days of working with a number of different departments in the city, we got an inspector. We got a case written up against Lenar for not following procedures. We had inspectors coming out to inspect the project. There's four case numbers that have been issued. The, one company showed up, moved the fire hydrants, water, your water meters, filled in everything. They broke a housing around one of the water meters, which ultimately you're going to have to replace. And secondly, they didn't connect one neighbor's water meter correctly. First day, or his first two days, they lost six hundred fifty gallons of water, which you will be charging them for because it's on their side of the meter. Problem contractor didn't do it right. Mary showed up at around eight fifteen or somewhere around that time of night, fixed it, did a wonderful job, was very polite to the customers. I've got the culprit here that wasn't put in right. And my, my comment is, it behooves the CDD to push the city or the contractor and hold their feet to the fire and make sure they provide proper permitting, they, they made proper arrangements to get inspections done by the city. City had no record this was being done. They've extended, Lenar has extended the property that is being worked on from three houses to four houses. And it's just been a nightmare for these people. And nobody notified if the work was being done. Nobody notified if they were going to have their utility shut off for a period of time. It's been an inconvenience, and it's just, I think, sloppy work and a disregard for the requirements.